Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council to order tonight, Thursday, April 14th at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the moment of silence, a pledge of allegiance led by councilperson Nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we have calling of the roll, Michelle? Councilperson Aller, councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Boland.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent. And during this portion of the meeting, we normally allow 30 minutes of public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on non-agenda items tonight?
My name is Donald Hyde. I live in Terre Haute, Indiana, on Poplar Street. This is the last meeting we'll have before the primaries. Before you meet again and the county council meets again, the primaries will happen and I'll be over with. There's one very important thing that the public's being asked to vote on this year. It's rare in the primaries when it's an important issue, but it's the most important issue. And that's the thing about the schools. I want you to vote yes for the school plan that they have provided, the school board. The problem is, they have provided that by violating the law. The Freedom of Information Act clearly states that they should have had and informed the public of why they were going to close certain schools, and above all, what money they were going to use to fix and what were they going to build. The money they're asking for has to include building spaces at North, South, West, Woodrow Wilson, and Otter Creek. No way you spend the kind of money they're spending without building something. You can paint, and you can remodel, and you can fix up the place without spending more than $100 million on what they're working on. They're going for $200 million or more. They have an obligation by law to tell the citizens and taxpayers of this county what they're spending the money on and why. They also have an obligation to inform the public why they're closing one of the schools that they're going to need to keep open, and that would be, of course, Meadows. I've been involved in school politics for a long time. I've been out of it and glad I'm out of it. But the bottom line is, there's two things you look forward in closing a school or keeping one open, and that is how many people are going to go to that school. The one area in Terre Haute right now that is booming with new families moving into new houses with young kids, there's only one area. It's around the park. And that area is within walking distance of Meadows School. Now, they've got home and land, and it'll eventually be sold to them in the next five years, and they're going to build a whole bunch more houses down that, all the way to -- and I know where it is, you guys do too -- and probably double the number of kids that's going to be going to school. Now, the school board is wanting to close down Meadows School. They say they're not, but they're eventually wanting to close it down because they want the land of Meadows, the metal field. Now, I was around as a child and heard the people who built Meadows School, and I asked them, "Why that big land sits there? Nobody's using it for anything. Can't we use it for something?" And they said, "Well, we'll let the YMCA, the Voice of the -- we'll use it for some things like that, for a little sports activity." But we can't get rid of that land because land's expensive and it's hard to come by. And eventually, we're going to have to build a brand-new Meadows School. That's why that land was kept like it is. It was kept there because it was where the new Meadows School was to be built. Now, I have found out for a lot of research that the real reason they're closing Meadows School is for that land. That land is extremely valuable right now, and they want to sell it to people who want to build homes on it, like they've already built, and like they're going to build right up to it. That land is more valuable than what they think it's worth to be used to build a new school on. You know who owns that land? I'll tell you who owns that land. Every single citizen in Terre Haute, Indiana, and in Vigo County owns that land. And if we want to build a school there, it ought to be our right to have the land and not have to pay price to buy up land somewhere else. If we own the land, we don't have to pay for land.
Mr. Hyde, I appreciate your comments, but can you wrap that up about one more minute so we have time for other people to speak?
Yeah, one more minute. One more minute.
Thank you.
They're wanting to build it -- they've admitted that the school board wants to build a little house here and a little house there. They have asked two other developers, and the developers, they want the whole land, and they want it now, and they want to put more houses there. Again, when that's -- by the way, the city council, you think this is not your problem. I disagree with you. Back in 1957, there was city schools in Terre Haute, Indiana, and Terre Haute City Council with the school corporation, the city school corporation, the key word, city school corporation, all the city, they bought the land and built the last city school built was Meadows. And that's why they kept the other land there for building the other school. As far as I'm concerned, the taxpayers of Terre Haute own that land, and we ought to be communicated with as why we ought to sell it for some other reason other than use it to build the new school. Thank you. We should think about that, really do, and I hope the voters do, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing no one else, we'll move on. Is there any corrections to the journal? There are none. Communications from the mayor? I did not receive any. Reports from city officials? I believe there is a report from the -- Yes. I believe we have someone from the Terre Haute Greenhouse Sustainability Committee.
My name is Ayushwarya Charia, and I'm in 7th grade at Honey Creek Middle School.
My name is Dearmid Corcoran. I am in 6th grade at Honey Creek as well.
And I am Leif Speer. I am in 5th grade at Dixie B Elementary School.
And we are the Earthlings, which stands for Environmental Activists for Resilient Terre Haute. And today, we're going to present to you a short presentation about the Terre Haute Greenhouse Gas Inventory. A GHG inventory can help governments make informed changes that will reduce their carbon footprint. Our inventory consists of carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, water vapor. We follow the Global Protocol for Community-Scale Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventories, which is the GPC, and the standards develop by C-40, the World's Resources, and the ICLEI. As part of our inventory, we first must define a study area. We did a community-wide inventory. For this inventory, we stuck to activities happening within the jurisdiction of Terre Haute in the year 2019. We chose 2019 as it was the last normal year before COVID. Next, we identified contacts. We have residential energy, commercial energy, and industrial energy. All three of -- all of our information for those three categories come from Duke Energy and CenterPoint, as they supply electricity and natural gas to Terre Haute. We also have transportation, which we got Terre Haute Transportation for Public Data, EIE, Google Estimation for VMT. We also have waste and wastewater from Terre Haute Wastewater Utility and American Water and solid waste. We have a special calculator provided by ICLEI due to a lack of communication with the republic.
We entered this data into ClearPath, which is a carbon footprint app. I should note that ClearPath converts, for example, methane and water vapor into their CO2 equivalents, so all numbers are given in the CO2 equivalents. On the blue paper you have been given, they do have -- we do have the actual numbers for the CO2, methane, nitrous oxide, water vapor, and the CO2 equivalents. We also have a pie chart -- we also have a pie chart representing the entire greenhouse gas emission for the -- for the -- for Vigo County, with the most being the residential energy, with 34% of emissions being from that area, and the least being water and wastewater, with less than 1% of emissions being from that area.
Thank you for taking the time to listen and study these results, as well as moving forward with plan to action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a very nice presentation. Thank you.
So, we also have a Earth Day march going on on April 22nd, basically to get the community involved and spread awareness as to what we are doing, basically. So, we are planning on getting as many members, the more the merrier, so we hope you can come. We hope you can make it to rejoin us.
It's on Friday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day. We will gather at 3:30 and march from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock.
From where?
At the Vigo County Public Library is where we will start. At 3:30, the march will begin around 4:00, and then we are going to have speakers at the courthouse, so we're going to be moving our way into the center of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, is there any reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety? I did not receive any. Reports from standing committees? I did not receive any. Reports from non-standing committees? I did not receive any. Items on second reading. Special Ordinance 3, 2022, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located at 3350 North Fourth Street and a portion of 5th Street located between 3350 North Fourth Street to the east and 501 McCullough Avenue to the west, and a portion of McCullough Avenue from 5th Street to the east and Woodcomb Boulevard to the west. Do we have a petitioner that'd like to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Scott Craig. I'm here tonight on behalf of Vigo Hospitality Group, LLC, represented by Dr. Vinicchio Reddy. You're probably looking for Lou Britton. I'm substitute lawyering for Lou tonight because he can't be here. I know you've talked about this quite a bit, and I don't want to dwell on it too much more, but I do want to make sure everyone understands what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. And I prepared some aerial photos that I've had blown up. Would it be okay if I stepped around to talk about those?
Sure. Thank you.
Bring this over a little bit closer. So, I'm going to start with --
That happens to load too, don't it?
So, start with the sort of 30,000-foot view of this. This is, of course, the old Elks Club and Golf Course, off of Fort Harrison. So, 41 is over here. Menards is over there by Eddie somewhere. And there's a stoplight here where you turn to come back to the golf course, and you come off Fort Harrison, off the Fourth Street, and up. The X down here marks the location where Dr. Reddy wants to build a new pro shop for the golf course, places where you go and, you know, you pay your fee, you rent your cart, probably get a hot dog, get some gloves, whatever. The X up here is the golf course driving range. So, you can hit a golf ball -- this is the city line, too. So, you can actually hit a golf ball here and land it outside the city, if you are any good. So, the idea of vacating some of these streets in park is motivated by the need to build the pro shop here, and we have some streets and alleys that are interfering with that. The request about vacating McCullough really deals with providing better access to the driving range primarily. Let me use this one now, if we can zoom in for a moment a little closer, and I think it'll illustrate a little bit better the streets that we're asking to be vacated. So, what you see here in red is property owned by a petitioner. This actually goes all the way up, of course, to the golf course. But they also own these lots here in red that are south of McCullough. The areas that are in green, we have an alley here. This is 5th Street. In theory, it's 5th Street. These we are asking to be vacated because the new pro shop will be in this area. This is McCullough. Now, McCullough was plotted to go all the way here from 7th all the way to River's Edge. Right now, McCullough sort of stops here at Mr. Milmer's home, and his home is here highlighted in blue. My understanding is, and I've seen the photo, there's some kind of fence across there right now that would stop access. So, what Dr. Reddy is requesting is that this be vacated, this be vacated, and McCullough be vacated. With the plan is to build a pro shop here, the city has agreed to assist by extending McCullough a little bit further here to the edge of what would be Dr. Reddy's property when it's vacated, if it is vacated. And then, Dr. Reddy would put a drive that would connect it to McCullough that would allow access from the pro shop here, out to 7th Street, up to the driving range, without having to cut through the golf course, which, you know, can get complicated when other people are trying to golf, when it's soggy, people want to take their cards where they shouldn't be. I know that this was somewhat controversial last month from what I heard, and that some time has been spent over the past month trying to reach out to the neighbor who is upset about this to try and find some possible solutions to ameliorate the concerns that he has raised. And thank you for your efforts to do that. I know that the city council doesn't want to do something that upsets people. I understand that and appreciate that. Unfortunately, my understanding is those efforts have not been successful. And so, there, you know, there was offers made to put fencing up, to shield the neighboring property, some other things, but those were ideas that the neighbors are just not interested in, and that's fine. I was interested in this, though, because when I do street -- I've done a little bit with street vacations before, and usually, there's issues when we're vacating a street or thinking about vacating the street. The concern is actually preserving ingress and egress and making sure that, like public safety has, a way back there. If we vacate this, then how are we going to get there? And in this instance, we're actually kind of doing a mirror image. We're vacating this in part so that it can be used for its intended purpose, which is ingress and egress. You know, this is a platted road along McCullough, so asking for it to be used for golf course traffic is not crazy. It's what it was there for, is what the subdivision is designed with in mind, is this being a road. Well, then it got me thinking. I like history. So, if you've heard this, there's a website called Historical Aerial Photos that you can go to and look at all these great historical aerial photos, and you can zoom in on something and just click through and see them in all these different years. So, I went back and looked at -- it's kind of fascinating, too, because the roads are all different, the bridges aren't there that we're used to. But I went back and looked at aerial photos of the golf course. The oldest one's 1949. It's hard to see here, but this is the pro shop here. Golf course is here, 1949. McCullough actually did go all the way through, back to the landing. 1962, still there, went back. And this is the home -- this home here is the same home that was built sometime before 1962, between 1949 and 1962. 1972, still there, starting to go, though, I think, from what I could tell in the aerial photos. And I can hand these around. I have extra copies if you're really interested. This is 1984, and from 1984 on, the road stops. So, I guess in some respects, what we're asking for this evening is simply to vacate this so it can be returned back to what it was intended for, which is some ingress and egress to and from the pro shop to the driving range up in the northeast corner. The primary access to the course itself will still come via Fort Harrison and Fourth Street. You know, this is -- there's only two ways to get back to the subdivision on 41, Florida down here and Fort Harrison up here. Stoplight here at Fort Harrison, people are going to turn to Fort Harrison, and they're going to come up the course this way. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have, or I'm sure Dr. Reddy can answer them if I cannot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this?
Donald Hyde, blocking a street like you did 8th Street's one thing. Completely removing the street is something else. Look, our streets, no matter where you are in Vigo County or the city of Terre Haute, our streets are for people to drive their cars on, walk on, ride their bikes on. It's a way to get around for the public at large. That's why they're called public streets. Now, I don't like blocking a street, but you get voted. But all the streets are still streets, except you can no longer go straight through 8th Street anymore. There's a big building in the way. But you can still go around it on other streets. If you close a street completely, then there's no public access to the river. There's no public -- and I'm talking about not just in cars, I'm talking on foot. You're not making it possible for the people that live south of the thing, who may want to build land there. You want to make it possible for people to develop the land. I've been to this place. There's a whole bunch of land in the wilderness out there that could be developed into housing. Well, if you take out the streets, you know, we're going to build new roads where we didn't have to build them at all? I say, make it so that that street goes where it goes. The one thing that that street does do, it takes you all the way to the river, right where you can see where the old -- the old -- I can't come up with the name of it right now, but I know what I'm thinking. The Conservation Club, the club that was once there, and they have two historical spots that are no longer being used. But you want to talk about tourism? You're always talking about tourism? Those two spots that are still there are historical, they're beautiful, and they have a great view of the river. It doesn't cost the public a dime to go there. But you start keeping the -- you start closing down those roads, then how are you going to get there? That's what this really boils down to. Who does it benefit? The people at large or just one person? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this? Come on up, Mr. Milmer.
I was here before. My name's Earl Milmer, and I'm still opposed to that opening in through front of my house because there's two entrances already at the golf course, one through 4th Street and one through 7th Street. They've got a gate there to golf course, and it goes straight to the driving range. So, I don't see why they couldn't come up with something where they -- wherever Mr. Reddy's building the pro shop, have a turnaround to go back to 4th Street, go to Fort Harrison, down to 7th Street, and straight to the driving range. Instead, open up the front of my front yard, which has probably been closed for 100 years, you know? It's going to affect a lot of people around there. I noticed the paper that they gave me said that whatever they're asking to get through wouldn't affect anybody on McCullough Street. Well, they never asked me, but it's affecting me. So, you know, that's kind of a misleading thing there because it is affecting me. And there's a lady that lives at 7th Street in McCullough, and she was supposed to be here today, but she took her shot, and she's all under the weather right now. So, she's had my -- texted my wife something she wanted to say, and basically, it was that she didn't think that road would hold up to any of this, you know, more traffic and everything. And it's a community, and it just, you know, if they could go in 4th Street, go to his new pro shop, turn around, go right out that way, straight down, I think would be a fairly reasonable idea. To bring something else up, I spoke to Dr. Reddy before I even knew exactly what was going on here, and he talked to me on the phone one evening and told me that he was planning on building a cart barn there. Never mentioned anything about a lounge or, you know, anything about a pro shop or anything. And, you know, it was on his property. I didn't see nothing wrong with that, you know? But I just, I don't think it's right that they can open up that property after it's been closed. I've got a lot of grandkids play out there, you know? I mean, I don't know. Seems like there'd be another way to do this since he has two openings to the golf course already, you know? And the drainage there, when it rains, where they're wanting to extend that road, that fills up with a whole lot of water there. It filled up with whatever rain we had last couple of days, it filled up there. If they put that road through there, where's that water going to go? Possibly towards my house, you know? So, I said my piece there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. What I started to say was about Dr. Reddy's phone call. At the end of the phone call, he told me, "Mr. Milmer," he said, "If there's anything at all I can do for you." He likes to get along with the neighbors and stuff. He said, "If there's anything I can do for you, just let me know. I can't do too much." Well, I got something that he could do for me. He can find another way to get into that golf course, you know? Thank you.
Hello. My name's Cheryl Piper. Earl is my brother. I grew up in the house that everyone's talking about that's at the dead end. There's one thing that the attorney said in his speech, or whatever you want to call it, that bothered me, that he said that roads and streets were in the way of building a pro shop, and it's like, roads and streets are in the way of building a pro shop. That doesn't sound right at all. What if you want to build -- what if somebody wants to build a pro shop somewhere else? What are they going to do? Shut their streets down, open them up? You know, it just, it doesn't balance out to residential and business. And the pavilions that he was talking about, and when you said that McCullough went through was way back -- went through was way back before I was even born, they had the pavilions down there at the, they would have fancy, you know, balls and dinners because back then the Elks was a big thing. And McCullough has an iron gate there, they would open those iron gates only when they had a big, you know, to-do, so people could get out. And I just, it, it just bothers me because it's not been open my entire life, and I also don't understand why they cannot use Seventh Street, which they already own, it's, you know, it's already, you know, it's just ready to go. I don't understand why they can't go Fort Harrison to Seventh Street. And another thing, the Fifth Street that he's talking about, that was, I guess, proposed when they first, that it stopped at Fort Harrison. You had a field, where the Meadows Manor North and the Fort Harrison Villa and all that stuff is, that used to all be fields, okay? Fifth Street did not come across those. The only reason there is a Fifth Street there now, and I'm not, it's, is because they built a house behind another house, they had to pave, I don't know, what, 100 feet or so? So these people, it does not go through, they turn on Fifth Street there, and they pull into their driveway, and that's it. And I just, you know, I, I just don't understand why they can't use, they have two other means. They have Fourth Street, they have Fort Harrison, and they have a Seventh Street. And how inconvenient is it going to be? It's not wide enough for two vehicles. If they make it a one-way, then how inconvenient is that going to be for the people that live around there? Are they, how are they going to get to their house if they can only go one way? Or, you know, do they have to drive through the golf course to get out? You know, it just, it doesn't make sense. That's all.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this?
Members of the council, I do not live in the area. My name is Matthew Alec, I live in Edgewood Grove. But I would like to note one thing. It seems like this council has a certain promiscuity about closing streets. It closed Seventh Street for Union Hospital, it closed Eighth Street for the Convention Center. Maybe those were justified. Should we close another street for a pro shop? What level, oh, how low, I guess, should we go? If I wanted to put up a hot dog stand, would, would you close a street for that? That's my contribution to this debate, because it just seems like there, is there an end to this? How many streets do you wish to close? Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
My name's Jane Vilmer, and I'm Earl's wife. My main concern is the kids and the pets in the area. They have on, I guess it'd be Sixth and a Half Street, they've built a whole bunch of new residential houses, it's all residential there, and a lot of people walk their dogs, and there's a lot of kids playing around there. And my great-grandkids learn how to ride their bicycles on that little strip that, on McCullough there, that's paved. And it's only paved to right where the mailman can turn around. And then it's just grass, you know, what they're wanting to open up. And I'm just concerned for the, the kids and the pets and all. And I'm kind of misunderstanding, is this for just golf carts, or is cars going to be going there too? You know, if it's for golf carts, that might be a different thing, but if there's through traffic, you know, I wouldn't want traffic on it. So that's, that's about it. They've said everything else. Thank you.
Yeah, the buses, you know, down there, they're mostly for out the mailman.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Can I just address a couple of points that Ray was on?
Sure.
One about the drainage issue. I know that Dr. Reddy has a site plan that's, I don't know exactly where it's at with city permitting right now, but that site plan does include a drainage plan as required by city ordinances, so that should be addressed. I guess I'm also not sure if I should, I got one gentleman who seems to be objecting because he thinks the street should remain open so people can get to the river, and I got another man who's objecting because they don't want it to be open. So I'm not sure who to, who to argue with. But I want to make sure that the public understands that right now McCullough Street is not open, it is closed. There's a gate fence across it, it's overgrown, you cannot get from McCullough Street to the river at all. The, I, perhaps I didn't make myself very clear about closing the alley in the pro, for the pro shop and Fifth Street. These are dead ends of Fifth Street and the alley. They don't go anywhere. This is literally, my office is on Fifth Street. If I drew Fifth Street all the way up, this is as far as it would go, in theory. So we're not asking to close any streets that have ever been, at least McCullough, McCullough at one point appears to have been a street, but Fifth Street and the alley have never been developed, never been used. And Mr., Dr. Reddy owns on both sides of those properties now. I know it's a little confusing for members of the public sitting out here, but this is not Seventh Street for, or Eighth Street in downtown Terre Haute. This is the tail end of Terre Haute. So, thank you.
Thank you. I believe we'll close public comment at this point. Any council discussion?
You said something, I got to clarify something for you. When I said street-
Mr. Hyde, I've already closed public comment.
I'm talking about the city council building streets. And you got to have the place to build the streets, and you have the right of way to build it anywhere. Thank you.
Is there any council discussion?
Can I say something?
Counselperson Azar.
My, one question I have, and I don't know who can answer this. Obviously, it's a city street, or we wouldn't be vacating it, correct? Who put the fence up to close the street in the first place?
Yes.
It was the city of Terre Haute.
It was not the city that approved that, correct?
Correct.
So in theory, that fence should come down anyway.
That's correct.
I might, I mean, I want to make sure I'm correct.
Yes, there-
So no matter what this council does, legally, or however we want to, we want to say it, the fence should be taken out.
Correct.
Because it was never approved by the city, as far as any of us know.
And we would have the ability to go do that any day.
We do have that ability, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I yield for now.
Can I speak again?
Any other councilperson? We've already closed public comment, Mr. Vilmer. At this point right now, we're in council discussion. Madam President? Counselperson Crossen?
Yes, I went up and drove around the property. I drove up right in front of your house, Mr. Vilmer, and, and I backed out and drove around and drove onto Dr. Reddy's property, and, and even drove up as far as I could on Fifth Street. And it is as Mr. Craig described it. And I wanted to have that understanding of, of how close it was. And I, others may have too, I suggested to Mr. Britton that perhaps it could be one-way just in front of your home, so that at that corner, which is open from there to Seventh Street, it remained two-way, but just leaving Mr. Reddy's property, perhaps it could be one-way, just for that one block, for lack of a better term. Therefore, you would only have traffic going in front of your house in one direction, and it would be less. I don't know, I'm not an, I'm not a transportation expert, and I don't know whether our city engineer would think that was a, a good idea. I just proposed it as something that might be discussed as, you know, meeting halfway on this issue. And, you know, I think it's, it, I, I thought it was worth at least consideration. So I, I bring that up now only because one of our speakers mentioned that, and that it, that that wouldn't make sense going from the, Mr. Reddy, Dr. Reddy's property to Seventh Street, and I would agree with that, but I think it could make sense for that one block, so that there wouldn't be people driving into Mr., Dr. Reddy's property from Seventh Street, but there would, people could leave that way and go up to the, so I just bring that up for potential consideration. It's my understanding that that has been rejected as being adequate, but I bring it up again because I think it is worth consideration. I yield.
Madam President?
Yes, counselperson.
Prior to the vote, I just wanted to announce that usually when issues like this come before the council, they usually ask the district councilperson to, to sign off on that, and it used to be an endorsement years ago, that's changed to just introducing. So I did do that. However, oddly enough, awkwardly enough, this ordinance and the next one, I may have a conflict of interest, I won't be voting, I'll be abstaining from this vote and the next one. I just wanted to announce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember?
I have counselperson Bowlin. So this is probably for Eddie. Since this is a current platted street, if we decide not to vacate it, are we responsible for maintaining it from this point forward?
In the respect of putting a, putting in a road?
Well, I mean, at one time it was a platted street that was functional.
I mean, we would retain the ability to do that.
Didn't have any expectation to do that.
I would say, from the extent of, let's say there was a, a dead tree that was causing a hazard, I mean, we have an obligation then to remove it. Go in there and do anything per se, no, I don't think we have an obligation, but we could do, for example, we could go in there and take out the fence, we could go in there and clear it all out tomorrow if there was a reason or a desire for the city to go and do that. There's lots of issues like this throughout the city, where there's overgrown areas like this that the city-
Any other councilmember? Do we have a motion? Counselperson Azar.
I make a motion, we approve special ordinance three, 2022, as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion made by counselperson Azar, seconded by counselperson Nation, to approve special ordinance three, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Special ordinance five, 2022, rezoning a property located at 1728 North Eighth Street. Area planning gave you favorable with conditions recommendation.
Sir petitioner here to speak.
Hi, Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, I'm with the law firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowry. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Terre Haute Land Company LLC. They're the property owners at 1728 North Eighth Street here in Terre Haute. And this property is currently zoned R2. They're asking it to be rezoned R3. I put a revised site plan in front of you this evening. The one that was in your package originally had eight parking spots, this has nine. Other than that, that's the only difference in this matter. This matter was heard, well, first, excuse me, the area plan gave staff, gave a favorable recommendation before the, the area plan commission, not in April, but in March, at which point it received a favorable recommendation to you this evening. As, as laid out in the staff report by Mr. Baylor, there was a, a discussion, because this is a unique situation. This is, this property is directly behind Union Hospital here in Terre Haute. And Union Hospital owns the entire lot, except for two lots. I'll give you three guesses which ones I'm here to rezone this evening. We're here tonight to rezone those two lots. My client, and this entity, Terre Haute Land Company LLC, has owned it since 2008. One of the members of this LLC and her husband has owned it prior to that date. In, in this process, and the reason this was tabled last month is, you know, this is a, a unique situation in that my client owns the last two lots, an entire block owned by Union Hospital. As you can imagine, and as you'll probably hear this evening, Union Hospital has an interest in acquiring these two lots, as any property owner would, to complete their full, full block. Unfortunately, unfortunately, in the real estate, this is, excuse me, the landowners are not required to sell, and this is a kind of a unique situ, not, I'll strike that, not unique. This property, as I stated, is currently zoned R2. So my clients tomorrow, or yesterday or today, could build two duplexes. They're tonight asking for it to be rezoned R3, so they can build a building with five one-bedroom units and nine parking spots. My client is very familiar with Union Hospital, in that the, the member I mentioned is married to a doctor that is employed by Union Hospital. Very familiar with the process. The members of this LLC are in the real estate business, they're very familiar with demand. There is currently a need in this area for quality housing for Union employees that come in from out of town for short stints of time. And they're trying to fill that need. What makes this a, a great location for my clients is it's right next to the hospital. At the same time, it makes it great for Union Hospital because it's right by the hospital. But, you know, this is a situation where my clients are asking this to be rezoned R3. I, I have no doubt Union Hospital has some plans for this property. If you were going to Beacon today, they're, one of the, call it 18 lots that make up this block, don't hold me to 18, one of them's zoned C1, the rest of them are zoned R2. The hospital's obviously zoned for commercial use, there's a, there's another C over here, and for the most part, it's residential, it's, it's R2 or R1. So what my clients are asking for is not out of the ordinary, it's not some crazy new scheme that I'm bringing here to you this evening. There have been lots throughout this area that have been zoned R3 for like purposes. We are simply here tonight, like many of the ones you've heard before you, and asking this to be rezoned R3. As I mentioned before, you know, I, you know, Union Hospital and I assume there was a time period where it was an absolute land grab. They were buying everything up they could, because as a, as a owner of property, you know, I'm sure, Mr. Azar, you'd love to buy the lots or the parcels next to your property. Or Mr. Elliott, the property around Sackart. I mean, I, as the owner, would love to have the spots around me to, to allow us to grow. Unfortunately, that can be difficult because the property owner next to you doesn't have to sell. In this situation, there has been discussion in last month, but the parties will never come, be able to come to terms. In my opinion, and I'd imagine Mr. Wilkinson, who's here this evening on behalf of Union Hospital, we don't believe a reasonable offer is made, therefore, it wasn't accepted, and therefore, we're here this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have with regard to this rezoning of 1728 North Eighth Street.
Are you finished? Is there anyone from the public that wish to comment?
I too have seen this land, and it doesn't make sense what they want to do- I too have seen this land, and it doesn't make sense what they want to do with it. Here's what you got to ask yourself, on a piece of land that could hold two houses, and that's all, and by the way, there's not much land after that either, they have, and the road comes to almost an end, it's, you know, the problem is this, they're wanting to put nine apartments in the same space of land that two houses would fit in. I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm an artist and an architect, studied it all, I know it can be done. What you got to ask yourself is, if they're going to rent these places out to the people who are nurses or doctors going to Union Hospital, do you want Terre Haute to have a reputation that they can't build better housing than that for them? When they leave and go back to where they're going to, and they're going to tell everybody, yeah, man, I went to Union Hospital in Terre Haute, Indiana, man, that was the smallest apartment I ever lived in in my life? Or you want them to build a place, or have a place, nice enough that they go back and say, yeah, it's a nice place? Everything matters, including how big the apartment is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shagley.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Kurt Wilkinson. My office is at 333 Ohio Street, I'm here on behalf of Union Hospital, and we do respectfully object to this rezoning request for the reasons that I'll briefly talk about. As Mr. Shagley indicated, this block is bounded to the south by Beach, to the north by Ash, to the west by Seventh, and to the east by Eighth, has 17, 18 lots, all of which are owned by Union with the exception of the two that are here at issue. This is right in the heart of Union Hospital's campus, as shown by this diagram, with the hospital itself being located just to the south, Huck's Cancer Center to the west. And as you will hopefully recall, when the street was closed to the construction of the new hospital, there were discussions with the neighbors to the north and to the south, where Union agreed they would not build beyond a certain point. So Union wishes to have this land available if there's, pardon me, a need to replace what's referred to as Union West, or to build some new construction. This would be the ideal location and probably the only location within the campus. And if these two, if these properties are built there, Union would have to build around it, which would not be a very attractive situation. Union did have discussions, and they believe they made a couple of generous offers to try to resolve this, but we were not successful. The land is identified as medical hospital area by area plan, and the Think 205 compliance I was not retained until after the area plan meeting had taken place, I don't know what happened, but there was not an opportunity to be heard at that point in time on this matter. Union would, again, request that this either be rejected or sent back to area plan for a review based on those issues. I stand ready to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilperson Nation?
Kurt, I do remember when Union Hospital was asking us to vacate Seventh Street, and I do remember the back and forth that went on between the hospital and the neighbors and the council members who represent that area or grew up in that area. What I don't remember is exactly where that line is that Union Hospital agreed to not develop outside of, as it runs along the north side of your campus.
It's either one or two blocks from Ash.
One or two blocks north of Ash. I disagreed with that approach then, and I still do. I think that Union Hospital has made a boundary at Ash Street, you can see it around the Huck's, around the Huck Center in the illustration you gave us, the houses that survive on Eighth Street and Ninth Street from that, from Beach going north, I mean, I know that the hospital's been actively acquiring property, but you didn't get this one, and the hospital has had a lot of latitude to do what the hospital has felt like they needed to all through that area. I note that the area to the south of Eighth Avenue isn't shown on this, and I, I know why, it's not what we're talking about, there's nothing sinister about it, but can you tell us where the southern boundary of the hospital's desired footprint is?
Not right off the top of my head, but it's...
It's down in the low avenues, like the ones or the twos?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. And we're looking at, and Eighth Avenue is the one that we all drive, as we, as we drive into the hospital's campus, right? Thanks, I yield.
Thank you. Any other council? Discussion? Do we have a motion? Oh, would you like to speak again? Please make it brief.
Thank you for enthusiasm, Madam President, on my speaking again this evening. So, first, when I first got the, the staff report from, from the area plan office, I was surprised, because it states, and when I read this, I thought, oh, this isn't going to be good, I bet I get to see my friend, Mr. Wilkinson, at some point in this adventure, and I've been able to talk to him and get to see him. It said, "Staff has reached out to Union Hospital to see if there's any immediate plans in the area, but they have yet not received response." They were notified even before area plan that this was going on. Mr. Wilkinson said two things that I, I kind of addressed early, right in the heart and ideal location. Except for some of the things I've said this evening, those are the most accurate words said tonight. My clients happen to have the golden ticket. They have two lots that any property owner would want, and that is to make the whole lot, unfortunately, or to make the whole block their own. Unfortunately, although Mr. Wilkinson said a generous offer, that offer was barely above what they paid some of the other property owners early on for one lot. My client has two lots, that's vacant, that's ready to go, and this, this lot becomes extremely valuable, whether you pass this or not, because if they build a duplex, there's nothing, nothing they can do to stop it. And then when they go to try to finish this block, it's a really expensive buy, whether it's an R2 or an R3. They also have to close an alley, which historically, this council won't approve, because it would dead end, so they'd have to create some type of exit along probably the, trying to picture this in my head, the south side, because, because historically, and I believe Marcus would agree, we don't like to close alleys when it creates a dead end. But one nice thing about this is, the way these two lots are, are located on this block, it's on the northern part of it, so they could almost, as you can see by your, your diagram that Mr. Wilkinson gave you this evening, if you go two blocks to the south, they could almost do that here, they just would, it's just a little bit of, takes a little bit, a little bit of headache and a little bit of more engineering on behalf of Union Hospital, if, and keep that in mind, if, they ever develop this land. This land's set vacant for a long time, it's not even zoned properly, so there, there's not even a sign that's coming soon. There's nothing in, that I'm aware of, on the books or plans, drawings that have been made or anything, except for what you received tonight, which, I'm not too sure what, what, I didn't get a copy, but I'm not too sure what's all on there, as far as plans. Again, I'm here tonight representing landowners who are asking for something that is not out of the ordinary for this area in our city, and I'd ask for approval of the special ordinance number five.
Do the council have discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion that we pass, special ordinance five, 2022.
Second. It's been a motion made by Councilperson DeBonne, seconded by Councilperson Bowland, to approve special ordinance five, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Motion carries.
And for the record, it'll show Neil abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Councilperson Garrison abstained.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Items on first reading, Michelle? We'll need to vote to take action on appropriations one through eight. Is that correct, Michelle?
That is correct.
Madam President, I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilperson Crossen, seconded by Councilperson Garrison, to vote to take action on appropriations one through eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Appropriation one, 2022, $9,240 from Edit Number 04040096 to Demolition Safe Buildings, Mr. Maurer, would you mind helping us for 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
Petitioner here to speak on this.
And when Mr. Felling returns on appropriation one, we need something.
You all know what this is, I apologize. We do this periodically, this is for the demos that we do throughout the city for condemned buildings, and Dean, we're here tonight to tell you about the laundry list of items that we do have, and obviously, we would ask that you would approve this appropriation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I hope they're not too difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Felling. Is there any public comment on appropriation one, 2022?
When you throw everything together in a big bag, it gets lost. But my question is this, you're saying unsafe buildings. One, I'd like a definition of what you consider an unsafe building, and two, what unsafe building? It's real easy to say, we're going to have a bunch of houses that we've decided are unsafe, and put them all together, and then we'll go around, if we can afford to tear them down, we'll tear them down. I want to know why the buildings are called unsafe. Are they not repairable? Is it possible that something's happened that make it impossible for anybody to repair them? I think that's a fair question, I'd like an answer, thank you.
Mr. Felling, would you like to address any of those questions?
City of Terre Haute has hundreds of condemned residential and commercial buildings, and that condemnation's done by our building inspector's office. Once they've sat in a condemned status for a certain period of time, they're, they go through a demolition hearing, which is a second, second hearing, to put them on a list, saying that this is a bad enough structure, and it causes, poses enough risk, that at the city's expense, we need to go in and tear it down. We only have a certain amount of money that we can spend on a yearly basis to go in and take care of these properties. We always tackle the most unsafe or those that pose the highest risk first, and again, this is just one step. So those are bid out to local contractors to go in and take care of the demolition process, and this will probably handle one or maybe two buildings. Does that answer your question?
It answers the question, but here's my point. I've lived here all my life, and one of the favorite places I love to visit, and I might add, Terre Haute has lost something with the loss of that building, because everybody loved a real haunted house. And that house wasn't all that unsafe, and we went in it all the time, and we came out of it all the time. And then finally, it got tore down. I miss that house. Unsafe, I want to hear what your definition of unsafe is.
I'd give you a definition of trespass, and that's going on somewhere.
Is there any other public comment on appropriation one, 2022?
It was destroyed because it was haunted.
If not...
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
I'm sorry Dean Branson isn't here tonight. I always like to see him, and I like to hear his explanations, and he holds up well under questioning about this stuff, because he loves to talk about his job. If Dean were here, this would be an open and closed thing, as it always is. There is an invoice for this one. The $9,000 was spent to tear down 1904 First Avenue, and through some kind of court proceeding, the money came back to the city. So that's, those are our tax dollars that have been spent, and we're being asked to move them from the big account into the demolition account, so that Dean can keep doing his work. I think that it's important work. I trust Dean mostly, to make the right decisions about what gets torn down and how it, how it all operates, mostly. He and I have argued a lot over the years about some of the things he's torn down. All that said, I'd like to move for approval of appropriation number nine, number one, 2022.
Second. It's been a motion made by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Crossen, to approve appropriation one, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Appropriation two, 2022, $51,200 from Fire Department General, 01010016 to FLSA, Pay Out Fire Department, 01010016, 014120101, for $4,500, into Cell Phone Fire Department,
Petitioner here to speak?
President Lou, President Loudermuth, members of the city council, Bill Berry, Fire Chief, both of these line items in this appropriation were budgeted for during the regular city council meeting last year, prior to local 758 CBA being passed. So I'm here to, we need to rectify that balance in both of those line items, because it was budgeted for prior to the contract, and the contract allotted for more money. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by council? Any public comment? No public comment? Madam President? Councilperson Crossen?
Just to clarify, Chief Berry, for the public, when you say CBA, you mean the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Between the city and the firefighter?
That's correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Any other questions?
Oh, I was going to say, if there be no further discussion, I move that we approve appropriation number two, 2022.
Second. It's been a motion made by Councilperson DeBonne, seconded by Councilperson Bowland, to approve appropriation two, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Appropriation three, 2022, $60,000 from Engineering Non-Reverting 02920042 to Engineering Non-Reverting Purchase of Vehicles, Number 029200420444080.
Sir, petitioner here to speak?
Good evening, members of the council, Marcus Meyer with the City Engineers Department. So what we're asking is to transfer $60,000 for purchase of vehicles. We have an aging fleet, and we've been working on providing safe vehicles so that we can do our job. Brad's here, and he'd be happy to provide any stats you want on our vehicles, he's put together a, a nice plan, and we're just trying to follow it, so we can be prudent on maintenance costs and long-term cost of vehicles. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any public wish to speak?
Again, I have one question, one question only. Vehicles, what vehicles? Is it police cars, is it the fire department cars, is this public maintenance cars? What kind of cars are they talking about? Thank you.
Mr. Maurer, would you like to address that?
I can, I can address that. So this is the City Engineering Department, so these are the vehicles that our construction inspectors are driving, to make sure the, the jobs are being... inspectors are driving to make sure the jobs are being done correctly. Our building inspectors are driving to go out and inspect homes, safe structures. We're driving them to go out and check on any projects, any issues going on. It's just to be able to do the jobs and keep up and provide the support for the public.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Councilperson.
I move for approval of appropriation three, 2022.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson Elliott to approve appropriation three, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Michelle?
Appropriation four, 2022, $838,395.50 from Community Crossings Grant number 04920000 to paving number 04920000034320105.
Mr. Maurer, welcome back.
Thank you. So this is appropriation to move the money that we were awarded through the NDOT Community Crossings Grant. We were awarded a grant to pave Fruit Ridge Avenue and Blakely Avenue from Maple to Walbash, Fort Harrison from Third Street to 13th Street, and I should know, I put these together. Fort Harrison and Poplar from First Street to 25th Street. I apologize for coming up short there, I should have known that. So we're just asking to transfer this money to paving so that we can use it to complete the project.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Council comment?
Yeah, this time I would encourage you to, you need to make our streets safer. All the paving we can afford needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Any council comment? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Councilperson DeBon?
Madam President, I move that we approve appropriation four, 2022.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson DeBon, second by Councilperson Elliott to approve appropriation four, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Michelle?
Appropriation five, 2022, $19,393.68 from General Fund 01010000 to Services Contractual Clerk number 010100203432010 for $3,232.28, and to Services Contractual Judge number 0101003034321010 for $16,161.40.
Michelle, I'm assuming you're the petitioner. Would you like to speak on this?
Well, Eddie and I have been flipping a coin, so it looks like it's me. The judge was unable to come, and he does apologize. He had a prior commitment. In summary, because you know I like to go into details, this, we started a program where defendants appearing on criminal charges is met with a, what's called a first appearance attorney, and their rights are explained to them, and the court procedure is explained to them. And there was a grant, originally that's run out. So now we're paying for this individual to be in court for a little bit of time every morning to meet with our defendants on their initial hearings. I would be happy to answer any questions, or Eddie would too. Would you? Thank you.
Is there any public comment? If not, council discussion?
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
Michelle, did you win that flip or lose the flip?
I really don't know.
I have moved for approval of appropriation five, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson Nation to approve appropriation five, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Michelle?
Thank you, everyone. Appropriation six, 2022, $88,451 from Police PSLIT number 07510017 to Police PSLIT Purchase of Vehicles number 0751001704444080.
Is petitioner here to speak?
Madam President, members of the council, Steve Lockard with the Police Department. This appropriation is essentially asking to move money that was received as revenue for the sale, from the sale of aging and antiquated, for lack of better terms, police vehicles that we got rid of, to move that back over to the Purchase of Vehicles line item. This would allow us, in combination with the next appropriation as well, to stay a little bit ahead of the game on the chief's five- to six-year vehicle replacement plan and continually reduce the maintenance costs of the aging fleet. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any public here that wishes to speak? Any council that would like to speak, or if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
This isn't very different from what Eddie asked us to do for Dean, for the Department of Development, and take money that we've got from their department, from the activities of their department, in this case, old cars, and put it back into their department so that they can sell it again, or use it, use the money again, in this case, to buy more cars. On that note, I move for appropriation, for approval of appropriation number six, 2022.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Crossen to approve appropriation six, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Michelle?
Appropriation seven, 2022, $89,128 from federal grant 03060000 to Police PSLIT Purchase of Vehicles number 0751001704444080.
Mr. Lockard, would you like to speak on this?
Madam President, members of the council, this appropriation is a request to move money that was received as part of a federal grant. It's a 2020 grant. Obviously, with supply chain and chip shortages, we're a little behind the game on this one. It's been drug out, and we've got extensions along the way. You may recall, in 2020, we received this grant from Indiana Department of Homeland Security to acquire and build out a command center vehicle, which was a smaller vehicle primarily used for our negotiators to have some security areas, to be able to do what they do on a critical incident, as well as a build out for a truck that would carry equipment that's tied to the SWAT team, the SRT team, to respond to scenes. This is money we received as a reimbursement for the purchase of those two vehicles, for the chassis. So it's a part of the grant. We'll still have another reimbursement coming in as those vehicles are finished and built out to pay the upfitters for that. But this request is just to move the money that we have already spent back into the Purchase of Vehicle line item that we made the purchases from originally. Happy to answer any questions.
Any public wish to speak? If not, any...
All the money is being spent on just two vehicles? Do you think that the money is being well-spent on these two vehicles? In other words, what makes them special and worth that kind of money? Thank you.
Mr. Lockard?
Both vehicles are, if I may, both vehicles are purpose-built for our negotiators. So when they go out to a scene, if it's a loud scene, and there are sirens, or a lot of crowd, or something like that, they can go inside the vehicle and have a quiet workspace to be able to negotiate with people inside the house. So there's an exorbitant expense with that. The other vehicle is a larger truck that will carry all of the equipment necessary, which also allows us to, as we have been doing over the course of the last few years, get rid of some of the militarized vehicles that we currently have that are old and very expensive to maintain as well. So it allows us to save money on that aspect as well.
Thank you. Council?
Madam President?
Councilperson.
There's no further discussion. I move for approval of appropriation seven, 2022.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson DeBon to approve appropriation seven, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Michelle?
Appropriation eight, 2022, $17,722 from Police PSLIT number 07510017 to Police PSLIT Purchase of Equipment number 0751001704444010 for $15,032.6, and to Police PSLIT Services Contractual number 0751001703432010 for $2,689.94.
Mr. Lockard, would you...
Madam President, members of the council, Steve Lockard with the Police Department. This is a little bit different than the last two. This is asking to move some money that we received from Duke Energy as a rebate for the installation of some efficient lighting in the new police department headquarters. We had planned on this, as we built out and equipped an outfit of the police department, that we would make some expenditures from approved budgets, and with this rebate, be able to cover that cost to kind of reduce the overall bonding that was necessary for the project. Some of the expenditures that we are covering are listed in the documentation within the packet here. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any public that would like to comment? Any council member that would like for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
I move for approval of appropriation eight, 2022.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson Boland to approve appropriation eight, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Resolution four, 2022, designating an area comeley identified as 4150 East Stillton Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Boulder Industries, Terre Haute LLC, this is for adoption.
Is there a petitioner here that would like to speak?
Good evening, council members. Steve Witt, President of the Terre Haute Economic Development Corporation. We have two representatives of Boulder Industries here today. We have Kevin Brown and Ed Austin. And just, I'll just provide a little bit of background, and then Kevin will come up and make some remarks. As you may recall, Pyrex USA declared bankruptcy in 2020, and Boulder Industries, which is based in Boulder, Colorado, CEO is a Hoosier though, from Fort Wayne area, they purchased the assets of the former Pyrex. And their business is similar, but they have their own proprietary process. They make a proprietary product called Boulder Black, I believe, which is a carbon black product that will be resold to plastic manufacturers and people such as that. Their product is derived from shredded rubber from tires, so they'll be keeping a tremendous amount of used tires from going into landfills and things of that nature. So what Boulder is proposing is a two-part project, each with an investment of about $40 million. Part one would be about 40 new jobs, the second part would be 20 additional new jobs. And we're very excited about this project and this opportunity. So often, we've seen where companies declare bankruptcy and the facility may sit for a decade or something. So I think we're very fortunate to have Boulder wanting to make this a very significant investment in our community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thanks, Mr. Witt. Madam President, council members. So again, my name's Kevin Brown. I'm an employee of Boulder Industries. A little background on Boulder, it was founded in 2011, and we've been a successful manufacturing facility since early 2019. Like Mr. Witt said, we take end-of-life tires from going to waste facilities, and we process them and make them into a viable resource, which is solid, liquid, and gas chemicals. It's a proven technology. We've been doing it since 2019. It's commercially viable. It's not a science experiment, like a lot of people believe the previous company was. Our plant we have in Maryville, Missouri, again, it's been there since 2019, and we plan on making and replicating that process here in Terre Haute. This plant is not to go out and generate customers, it is to meet current demand of customers that our Maryville facility can't meet. Like Mr. Witt said, it's 40 to 60 employees, depending on what phase. All in, it's 60 employees. I'll cut to the chase because I know you guys want to go home, probably. Project summary is total project size is 78.1 million in two phases. The real property improvement's going to be 28.9 million. Personal property improvement's going to be 49.1 million. The project start date is July 1st, 2022. The project completion, full completion date is June 30th, 2024, with Phase One being done early in 2023. New jobs, like we said, 60 total. If you look at the year total for the wages, it'd be about $3 million or $50,000 per person on average. So tax estimated to be paid, I'm going to go through both resolutions. So for real property's 3.23 million, for personal property's going to be 1.36 million. Tax estimated to be abated for real property, to be abated is 2.43 million, but for real property, it's 1.25, and for personal property is 1.18. And what we're looking at is, at full capacity, up to 126 million pound of waste will be diverted from landfills and burning. That's all, guys. Thank you. I can answer any questions.
Council member have a question at this point? Councilperson Nation?
Hey, thanks for all that. I do have a question about the tires. Where do you, where do you shred them, and where will they be held before they go through your process?
We have a partnership with a tire shredder, and they will bring shreds in. We have an onsite containment facility that we will be building. What is currently there will be torn down, and they will be kept in silos and used that way.
How many silos?
I'm not sure. Ed?
We're in the regard, no matter, to run seven.
The reason I ask is because I remember the Pyrex proposal, and you know, this hasn't been that long ago. I think they entered into partnership with the, somebody, a company or an outfit up at the former Newport Weapons Facility in an adjacent county. And am I right, Steve?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so this is a different scenario. It's all going to be held on site at this one?
We will take in shreds. We will, but we will be bringing in shreds from a vendor that we have partnered with called Liberty Tire.
Okay, thanks, I yield.
Can I add a couple of things that I didn't mention? One, because of Boulder's proprietary process, they're removing all the personal property, all the manufacturing equipment, replacing with their own proven equipment and technology. And then it's also the company's desire to use as much local businesses and contractors as they can in regard to the project, and I know that's important to all of us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Witt.
And, and, Councilperson Crossen?
I'd just like for you to talk to us a little bit more about your wages. I get the $3 million, and divide that by 60, and you get $50,000. But could you talk to us a little bit more about entry-level wages and for...
There's a typo. I forgot to give you the corrected page.
Is, excuse me?
I'm sorry, Councilperson Crossen, there's a typo on that SB one. I forgot to give you the corrected page.
Oh, okay.
So he knows that the amount he listed is an average salary. He didn't put the total.
Yeah, no, I know it's an average, too. I just wondered if you could talk about that a little bit more.
So I do not know what the minimums and maximum salaries. So of course, a plant manager, skill level jobs like engineers will make more than $50,000, and entry-level jobs will more than likely be less, but I'm not in a position to be able to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
No, no problem.
I yield. Other council person? Any comments from the public?
First of all, my name is Donald Hyde. First of all, from what I get from this, I like what I hear. However, I have not heard the one main thing that every business should be selling themselves on. What product are you producing, or are you only cutting up, chopping up into small pieces tires? But if you do that, then you have that product, you have tons of it laying around, what are you going to do with pieces? In other words, what are you going to sell to the public? And I am the public. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, would you like to respond to that?
Thank you. I'll keep it short. So what we do is we take the rubber and we pyrolyze it. Doing that, we turn it into a carbon product, which we sell back into the industry, goes into tires, goes into plastics, goes into inks coatings. And then we take the gas from that, and we create oil, a light, heavy cut of oil, we sell it back into the industry, and we also make a gas that we actually can power our plant from. our plant from. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any counsel?
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
Steve, I'm going to ask a question for the public. This is, this is a new tax abatement. They're not taking over an existing tax abatement from Pyrex, who was here before, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On that note, if there's no more discussion, I move to adopt resolution four, 2022, as presented.
Second. Been a motion made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson DeBonne to adopt resolution four, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Motion carries. Michelle? One. Opposition? Next resolution, Michelle?
Resolution five, 2022. Designating an area commonly identified as 4150 East Stilton Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement, Boulder Industries, Terre Haute LLC, this is for adoption.
Would the petitioner like to speak again?
I've explained the project, but if you guys have any more questions.
Any public comment? Councilperson DeBonne?
Madam President, I move, if there's no further discussion, that we pass resolution five, 2022.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson DeBonne, second by Councilperson Garrison, to adopt resolution five, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Motion carries. Michelle?
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for our review of CF1 forms.
Thank you, gentlemen, and welcome to Terre Haute.
Your first one is Warren Village Two, LLP, for resolution 14, 2016. You should have a copy in front of you. I need to get my correct copy. This one was a new project, so they had no employees to retain. They do have two additional employees than the originally estimated, and it appears that they entered all of the information as required on this form. Just as a reminder, since it's our first one of the year, you can vote to find them in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If you show them not in substantial compliance, a hearing will be held in 30 days.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
I move that we find Warren Village Two, LLP's CF1 form for resolution 14, 2016, in substantial compliance.
Second. Been a motion made. Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Crossen, to find Warren Village Two, LP, in substantial compliance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Michelle?
Next one is Warren Village, LP. This is resolution 13, 2012. Council President Lautermilk, I think you'll agree, this is nearing the end of its life for this abatement. There may be at least one more year. Would you agree?
I would agree, yes.
Okay. They have, they are reporting they have three additional employees than originally estimated, and they did complete section four as well.
Questions or comments from the council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
I move to find Warren Village, LP, their CF1 form for resolution 13, 2012, in substantial compliance.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilperson Garrison, second by Councilperson Nation, to find Warren Village, LP, CF1, resolution 13, 2012, in substantial compliance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Azar, second by Councilperson DeBonne, to adj, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed to adjourn?